Two hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-eight and three hundred ninety-eight dollars and four cents in the general fund. There are additions. Each of you should have had the printout for that because it was a payroll day. So they're pretty lengthy. So if you're all good with that, I won't read all of them.
I'll make a motion.
Earl?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, we go to the guest section. You already got to meet one of our new employees, Hunter. And now I'd like to introduce Diane's daughter. She's our clerk of courts. She resides down at Lake. She's also clerk of courts for Russell Point.
The village of Russell's Point.
Hi.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for the opportunity to come on board and follow up. I certainly enjoyed working with Mayor Mike as well as Chief Monter. And I actually had the opportunity to help structure and set the court up when the village of Waynesfield decided to reinstitute it back in 2013. So it's been my pleasure to continue on with that process. If there's any questions or anything that you might ever have, please don't hesitate to call me. My personal cell phone's available. And from my driveway to your driveway is just about seventeen minutes, so it's not a big deal. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, go to committee reports.
Well, as you, as the mayor explained, we have a new employee as well as you guys got to meet Hunter. Just a little background information on him. He's a two-and-a-half-year-old German Shepherd from the Czech Republic. So his commands are all in Czechoslovakian, which was a neat little adventure learning that language when I was used to speaking in German to my previous dog. He specializes in detecting narcotics, tracking, article searching, and apprehension. Hunter has immediately bonded with the family, my family, and I, more so with my kids, I think, than me some days. However, when it is time to go to work, he has a ton of working drive. We've actually been deployed twice. Once, the city of Belle Fountain called us and we assisted them on a traffic stop there. And I was the first on a call just east of Towers of Burglary this past week, and we utilized him during that as well. In both cases, he definitely did his job, and I'm happy to put him to use. In the near future, I will be having a banner made to recognize the individuals, groups, and businesses that have donated to the Canine Program. The donations have more or less covered the expense for purchasing Hunter, thanks in large part to a donation by Bonderhaus Gil, German Shepherds, Inc., and the owner, Hal Gil. He offset the cost of Hunter by about two-thirds of the cost. So it was a substantial donation, so we're very, very grateful and thankful for what he's done for us and the community. And a lot of people may not remember, but Yukon, he actually donated a hundred percent. So he's made substantial donations to this village in the past, so we're very happy about that. This past week, the state of Ohio came to my office to conduct the triennial audit for the law enforcement automated database. Basically, what that is, is a fancy term for how we run license plates and background checks and things like that. Every three years, they have to do what we call routine audit. They make sure that we're, you know, in compliance from a training standpoint, documentation standpoint, and that we're using it correctly the way it's intended to be used. So I'm happy to report that this one was an exceptionally good audit. There was one minor finding with regards to training that we've already corrected. So simply, I failed to document one area of training that we had done. We'd actually done the training. In fact, I told the auditor all about the training, and she said, "We just have to write that down." So I did that, and now we're in compliance. So the auditor was pleased with the police department's organization. She services this entire part of the state, northwest, west-central Ohio. And she was very, very happy with our organization and with the way, you know, I had all the information ready to hand to her, made her job a lot easier. She actually spent more time, I think, playing with Hunter than the actual audit took place, so she was happy to meet the dog as well. And lastly, we've had, recently had several unlocked vehicles being broken into and small items being stolen. We've also been working on several drug cases. Additionally, I was tasked with serving subpoenas to individuals who were delinquent on their local income taxes. I served about a dozen subpoenas to residents through that process. Actually went a lot better than I expected. Most people understood why they were getting the paperwork. They also understood how easy it was for them to take care of it so they didn't have to come to court. They were somewhat relieved. Couple individuals actually said, "Well, I was waiting for this time so I could go ahead and take care of it. I just thought you guys might forget about it." So, I mean, we've had, we've run the gamut. Nobody has been irate or anything like that. They understand and most of which have made arrangements, I think. They said they were going to be calling CCA and getting arrangements set up. We may have a couple that may appear in court, but, you know, we'll see how that comes. I think our court hearing is coming up sometime in November. So there have been several investigations, I kind of alluded to it last month, that have been taking a lot of man-hours, making it difficult work towards rectifying the junk vehicle problem we have in town. However, we did meet today, actually met the solicitor a while ago to speak about that. We are putting a plan in place to go to the next step of enforcement for our codes, all of our codes and ordinances, including, by comparing to the junk vehicles, you know, trash, that type of thing. So if there's not any questions, that is my report.
We gotta send out a thank-you note then?
Yeah, I think that's absolutely appropriate, yeah. I definitely think it's appropriate. We may even, I'm just flying off the cuff here, but we may even look at like some sort of plaque or something maybe we could give to him and say if we can convince him to come to a council meeting or something like that and do a presentation just to thank him, because he has, I mean, I would estimate about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars worth of, I mean...
I've never met the person. I don't know if any of you have or not, but I would appreciate the opportunity.
I think that'd be absolutely appropriate, so I will try to work on that this week and make contact with him between him going to Germany and that type of thing. He goes to Germany roughly ten times a year, so he just got back, I think, last week, and then he started a new class up. So his schedule's somewhat tight, but I'll talk to him. Actually, he sent me a text message. I have to pick up my certification, so I'll just say something to him when I go out there. And he's not going to want the attention, I guarantee he's not.
Well, if he does not want to come to a meeting, if we could at least have him stop in?
Sure.
And we'll do a nice little
Absolutely.
Personal presentation of some kind, thank you.
Possibly even a good neighbor award or something like that.
Yeah.
Certainly, he qualified.
Yeah, well, yeah. Thank you.
Just touched on a few things. We did a lot of blacktopping this past month. I mean, a lot of you noticed. The repairs, the guys, I thought, did an outstanding job. Want to extend a thank you to the county engineer's office. They provided us with a roller free of charge and just, you know, networking together with the equipment, and that made a big difference. And I think the job for that not being our discipline was well done. I think the intersection of some other places that were topic of controversy has been resolved, and so very pleased with that. The lagoon project is coming along and should be by next council meeting, I think, getting close to completion at that time. I think the mayor has some video. Is that?
That's still shots, but that shows on screen what our lagoon was and what we have now. You'll see the third lagoon. If you want to see video, it's on the website. It's a nice aerial shot. Appreciate Steve's parents taking care of doing that with their drone. Makes a great big dump truck look like it's only about this long. But it's a nice presentation, shows, like I say, the new pond, it shows the old ponds built up. It's pretty impressive because with the vegetation, the trees and everything around, you know, you can't see it from the road. So you can only assume what's there. That should have longevity of a lot of years now.
Well, the two-cell lagoon on the left was built, I think, when you built your system in, about nineteen sixty-four. And so it's endured all the EPA changes and the growth of the village. This should give us a lot more retention than it puts us in compliance with EPA regulations, and we're hopeful, of course. Currently, the way it's operating is we're bypassing the two lagoons on the right. You notice the green, that's actually dried algae. We're bypassing it, and that's why you see the back, on which currently is the only one active and why they're completing these two projects. They dug the one in the back first, put it online so that we were operational, and then they proceeded to start renovating the other two to make them, you know, to complete the project. So essentially, we will call the one on the right, lagoon one. The one on the back will become two, and then one on the left will become three for references if you, in the future. And we're hoping for as much as possibly a six-month retention. Where before, a lot of our issues were that our lagoons were shallow and they were being expended a little too soon. And it puts, it wasn't waste or anything, but it was just certain ratios put you out of spec. So this should more than accommodate growth and longevity. So we're very pleased with the progress of it. And so that's where we're at with that, and I'm hoping that probably in the November council meeting, we'll be able to report that it's either completed and turned over to us or it'd be very close. Any questions on that before I move on? I don't want to take a lot of time.
That was the one-point-five-million-dollar lagoon project, so there was a lot of work done out there.
Then moving on to our next one-point-five-million-dollar project is the Northwestminster Street project. As you, many of you know, the lights are active. EPA, I mean EPA, excuse me, ODOT has given me two letters, which I have had on the mayor's desk. And the first one was a punch list, initial punch list, that the contractor had with ODOT to complete the project. And ODOT had a list of items that they wanted addressed. And then I saw the second punch list had only like two items. So they haven't contacted me that it's been released, but I'm assuming if it's not, it will be very quickly. So again, that's another one-point-five-million-dollar project that started, I think, two years ago because we did it in conjunction with the ODOT grant. And we're very pleased to say that Northwestminster Street, the infrastructure is probably got a seventy-five to a hundred-year life on it now as far as the infrastructure, water and storm and sewer. So we're very pleased with that. There's such a, I haven't heard the first negative comment about the lighting. Everybody's very pleased with it, even to the point that I can remember when we installed the lights when I first came here on Southwestminster Street. Everybody's very pleased with them, but now they're saying they'd like to see the Northwestminster Streets on the south. So as you knew all from the past, that my goal was to probably take those out when we extend the walking path, put those lights on the walking path would be the goal, and maybe be able to take these, this lighting to Southwestminster Street. And then as we look in the future of an extended plan and maybe doing east and west, sixty-seven, it'd be the same thing. So very pleased with that. Any questions on Northwestminster Street?
I love the lights. I love them. They're very nice.
Again, another grant conjunction with the engineer's office is the Storm, North Town Storm project should be getting started. I want to thank you for, in my absence, while I was at the AMP conference, you passed a resolution for us to utilize the remaining amount of that grant so that we'll get more work done in that project. The North Town Storm, again, I extend my appreciation to the engineer's office, working with us. We actually have designed that in about seven or eight phases. It's designed because we know we couldn't afford to do it all, so we're going to do all we can and then little by little do more as we go down the road. But we're doing probably, and I'm just off the top of my head, saying about five or six phases of that in this project. I had hoped to report tonight when they were going to start, the engineer and myself had not gotten together with a construction meeting, pre-construction meeting, but the contractor has been selected, the bid has been approved, and so we're going through the process. Probably by November's meeting, they will either have started the project or will have a start date, and it has a completion date of about July of next year. And that, I think, and I'll hold off on that, but I think that's about a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar project, and we received about eighty-thousand dollars in grant to assist in that project from OPWC. So we're very appreciative of that. And you're going to see, I'm going to go ahead and mention it now. I'll explain it now and give you the, is that okay, Jill? Can I do that? If you look down on new business on item B, is an authorization for an OPWC application. We're applying for a grant of seventy thousand dollars. And it's earmarked, and I'm going to pass these out, the resolution I'm asking you to pass. The same grants that we, let me sit down, that we utilized for the North Town Storm project is OPWC, and we're eligible to apply again. And where it was fifty-six thousand before, and then we waited a couple of years and got an additional, this year it's seventy thousand dollars with a ten percent match. Or seventy thousand dollars with a twenty-year loan at zero percent for amount. So my recommendation for the application was we utilize the whole seventy thousand in grant because if we would have done the seventy with a ten percent match, we would have gotten sixty-three with seven thousand out of matching funds. But if we do seventy thousand total in the grant, then we borrow ten thousand, which is the same seven we were going to match with, we actually get eighty thousand dollars worth of work for ten thousand dollars of zero percent money. So, you know, and so I thought that was the best bang for our buck. And this is earmarked strictly, I mean extensively for streets for next year. If we get this application, it'd be eighty thousand dollars worth of light popping in the village. And we had to select streets and areas to do that. We can't deviate. We have to do what was on the application. We put many different areas on there so that we would make sure we could utilize all the grant money because if you don't have it on there, you can't use it. So we have more streets than we have grant money.
And typically, about every two to three years, we generate enough revenue through permissive license and all that to do some paving, but it normally ranges from twelve to sixteen thousand dollars. So over the years, you see, well, we'll do this street, maybe a few patches. We do this street in two or three years. It takes a long time to do this turnaround. But with this grant coming up again, you know, you figure seventy, eighty thousand dollars worth of work, that's going to clean us up real nice. You know, it would take us a lot of years to get to that point.
And we would never be able to complete probably a whole street with the amount of money that we generate. But ironically, so we can do, use the loan, and I asked if there was a free payment penalty, and there isn't. So the zero percent money, if we decide just to wait two years and build up our permissive that we normally would use, we could pay off our ten thousand dollars. So I know it's down in new business, but Jill, will you be allowed to do it now if you wanted? But I would like to ask for the applicant to be able to apply for that.
I'll make a motion to drop resolution sixteen dash ten dash one.
Two.
A resolution to authorize the mayor direct and execute contracts of the Ohio Public Works Commission for street paving.
I'll second. Miller?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Thank you. I have one final thing, and I know everything was positive, and this isn't going to be popular, but it's absolutely necessary to bring up. I've been talking about it since I've been here, that eventually we would have to raise rates because our cost to doing business keeps going up on the electric front. And I think historically, they used to raise the rates about every two to three years. There hasn't been a rate increase since two thousand and seven. Now, we did implement the PCA in, I think it was thirteen, which it blew up actually a rate increase, but that, what that did was it guaranteed our power cost. As it went up, it would modulate that, so that's why people started seeing the PCA as yourself you saw. Well, and the concept of that was, is when the PCA gets to a high number or as large as maybe as like it is, where it's almost half of a bill, that we would go back, do a rate study, look at what it actually should be, and the goal would be to bring the PCA back to zero, the rate being what it is, and then start from there. I did get ahold of Courtney and Associates a couple of months ago to do a rate study. In the past, it was kind of a, not as well-informed and it's very in-depth survey that needs to be done to understand your projected cost. And so he just got back with me today with some preliminaries. I don't think it's appropriate to bring up and not be informed on it. What I want to say is be prepared in November to see a presentation either for myself, I may have them come in to present it, of a recommendation of what the independent survey says our rate should be for our cost, what our inflation is going to be, and I think they're only projecting out to like nineteen. They're only going out like three years. Even though the PCA guarantees it covers our power cost adjustment, it's not an adder that takes care of all of our other incidentals in rate cost. So there's a couple of recommendations they're looking at that may help adjust that because if we don't do something, let me just summarize in general what we're looking at. When I came here, our megawatts were about fifty dollars a megawatt, which translates into about five cents a kilowatt. Well, now it's up around seventy. And in nineteen, twenty nineteen, it's going to be closer to ninety, which is nine cents. And these are just because some of our twenty-year contracts have expired in the last couple of years. And when you rewrite those contracts, it's like anything else. They build twenty-year contracts. So the cost of doing business today is not what it was twenty years ago. So they build that in, and they build in their inflation. So essentially, it's just like the gas pumps. Twenty years ago, what was the price of fuel and what we're paying today. But they're taking the actual data we have of what our contracts cost, what the cost of service is, and all those factors, and then they come down with a recommendation of what our rate should be and any other recommendations. So I'm summarizing all that that in November, because he and I talked today in a conference call, and he was saying that, you know, probably anything we do, if we do do it, should be like in January, the first year going forward. So I just want to put that out there for you to be prepared, at least listen, talk about it, and consider it. And that's all I have here.
Any questions?
Okay, mayor's report. Fourteen hundred and seven dollars was put into the general fund, mayor's court for the month of September. I've already interviewed employee evaluations. I've reviewed all the evaluations and have required the proper letter of recommendation. I would ask that at the end of the meeting, can we go into executive session briefly and decide whether you want to give raises and do how much and all that.
What you meant was you wish to discuss it, and then when you come back in open session to decide that. Sorry, mayor.
So let's go on to old business. We put on a holiday competition.
I'll make a motion to have the third reading of ordinance sixteen dash eight dash two. An ordinance establishing the Waynefield School holiday lights competition.
I'll second. Miller?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is a letter from Mr. Fitzgerald from school. I'll get a copy of that. What they're asking once again is if we would like to entertain the thought of putting Waynefield School banners on our lake holes with different suggestions of how many and where and so on and so forth.
I have a question. If we decide to do this in some manner, there's going to be cooperation between the two groups, right? I mean, we're not just turning it over to the school, right?
Well, the council has the right. It is our village.
Right.
They have every right to say what can and what can't, and when and where. And that's kind of what they're asking. If you'd like to entertain it, if you're not. And if so, where, how many, that type of thing.
If I may add to that question, I would think as the administrator, as a, how I operate with many different code things is that if anybody comes asking to do something or wants something, that we ask them to give us a recommendation of style, design, color for approval.
Right.
So the village, I guess what I'm saying is would reserve the right for the final draft of drawing or design of whatever it is. You would consider whether it be bleachers, you know, ball diamonds, you know, flags, you know. So I think that would be reasonable to say to work in conjunction.
Right.
And actually, if you do consider it, it would probably be wise to form a committee to work hand in hand for that so that the village could, whatever they're choosing to do, you can utilize that concept, whether it be size, you know, and sometimes whatever, I'm just saying, it might be boohoo view if you consider it to have a committee for that.
I'd be willing to go to number four.
I think it's kind of important for us to kind of support, like our support at school.
Well, I, my feelings are, we spent near seven years Well, I, my feelings are, we spent near seven years, a million and a half dollars to get to this point, okay? And I for sure want to promote the village of Wayne's Field, and the school as being part of our village, I agree, that should be allowed to do whatever. But I guess my first take would be, I would like for the village to have the first shot at, you know, getting the houblé, or whatever you want to call it, that hey, this has been done for the people of this community, whether you're a part of the school, whether you're not, or anything like that, you know. And I've also looked at a possibility of a rotating system for spatial events that the school has. Sure, put them all over the place, but this is our norm, that type of thing. You know, try to, try to work with everybody to make it work.
This is just a thought, but could there be school banners during the school session, and then the village banners, like from the time school's out, till the time school starts again?
Yeah. Well, I guess I'd like to see, just like holidays, at some point in time, we would like to see some holiday banners put up, okay? So that means we'd have to sacrifice taking down either Village of Wayne's Field banners or school banners to do that. So this whole process needs to be kind of worked out, because if somebody comes up later with another idea, we want to celebrate something else, we want to get banners, well, then you have to do a rotation of some kind.
What are we planning on doing at the village?
What are you saying?
Well, we haven't, Jill and I, we're getting ready to do the temporary appropriations for next month. And when we sit down and look at finances, this is not something that was in our budget this year. So we don't personally have any cost factor.
We also have to do street signs this year.
Yeah, so we don't have a budget for this, and we don't have any cost built in to that. Now, for next year, we may budget for that. So I guess what I'm saying is, we're not prepared to do anything unless council would, I guess, appropriate, or, but we'd have to look and see. You know, we haven't done any due diligence yet to see what it would cost. I know you have setup fees, you have design, you know, fees, and you have to have sizing fees. That's why I was recommending the committee, if you work towards a common shape and design, and then, okay, if we're talking, I've heard two or three things already, holiday banners, a school banner, a village banner. As many of you know, before I came to Wayne's Field, I lived in Ada for 30 years, and it started out the same way with banners. I was there when they put the street lights up, and they started implementing them, and Ohio Northern wanted certain areas, so they jumped in and supported.